Good evening. Would you take your seat, please, everyone here?
Do you want me to announce the open meeting situation?
Yeah, no, I'll fill out.
You can go on that later. Simply, unfortunately, we don't have a quorum. So, you know, we can still...
We're gonna do the regular stuff.
Well, if you want me to say something...
Well, I can do it here. Good evening. I'm sorry to say we're missing two selectmen tonight. One is Dudley Sek, the chairman, and the other one's at a doctor's appointment, and he hasn't been released yet. So, this is for T. T, this is my meeting tonight, you know. Anyways, would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Altogether, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and eternal.
Okay, so, because we don't have a quorum, we can't, you know, go open the meeting as a Board of Selectmen meeting. However, we do have things on the agenda today that would've, we would've taken care of, that we can still do. We just can't, you know, you can't make any votes, can't make any decisions without Elise and other selectmen, so... Wanna start?
Sure. I'm very pleased tonight, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, to award a certificate of appreciation to Robert Barretta. Robert, come up, please. Come on, right over here. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, very, very proud of you. You did an outstanding job saving those people.
Chief, I'm gonna get out of the light.
I'm very, very, very proud. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You know, great, great thing. This is your certificate from the Board. Appreciation for that life-saving effect that took you and saved those people was huge. And I mean that. Very, very proud. And the Fire Department is all here, and I'm very proud of them, as always, you know. They're doing a great job, and they're just a part of the team that, you know, you excel. You excel, and you, you know, take your hand, you know. You did the right thing. I wanna congratulate you. I appreciate the Fire Department coming up and supporting firefighter Barretta. He did an outstanding job, and it's just a reflection of our Fire Department, the training and the people. And not only proud of him, but I'm proud of our Fire Department. You know, we don't get a chance to say thank you from the Board of Selectmen. You're always there, and I know the citizens of the town appreciate your diligent duty. When someone gets injured and calls that 911 and calls for an ambulance or a fire truck, your team chief is here to serve, all of you. And I'm not only proud of firefighter Barretta, but I'm proud of the Fire Department as well. Thank you. Without my two compadres tonight, we're gonna just kinda go through the minutes. We've got a few things we can, we can do.
Let me go right to public, the municipal MVP program presenter.
Yes, we'll move to that. Where is she? Oh, here. She's gonna run the slides.
So, next we'll invite up the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Committee and Isabel, who's been helping the committee put together the findings and go through this process, and will come up and present that to the town.
All right, let's start. So I'm Isabel Cowish with Clarenham Hill Consulting, and we are the town's municipal vulnerability preparedness provider. And I will be talking about the MVP program that the Town of Nahan has been conducting since last summer or last fall. So I will give a brief overview about the program and the outcomes and what those measures might mean being carried forward. And so a brief background about myself. I'm the principal of Clarenham Hill Consulting, which is a boutique, boutique urban and environmental planning firm, and so we provide solutions for resiliency, climate change measures, mitigation measures, and strive to provide holistic solutions that address issues that also have co-benefits for other aspects. So, before I go into the MVP slides or what this means, I want to acknowledge the team that was part of that. And so we have Brendan, actually, here from the MVP Committee. So in May of last year, the MVP Committee was formed, and an application to the MVP planning grant submitted, and that was obtained. And so the MVP Committee has a very strong membership, and those members are listed on there. In addition to that, we had key stakeholders that were very relevant in order to develop action items and measures, and those encompass the Fire and Police Department, Emergency Management, and the DPW, and as well the Town Administrator. And so what is the MVP program? It is essentially a financial assistance to municipalities for climate change resiliency planning, and then later on to implement those priority projects. It is a community-led process. It leverages on existing efforts that the town has been already conducting, such as existing plans, existing studies on stormwater, on the water system overall. And then it takes into account statewide measures and models and analysis on climate change, and incorporates that on the municipal or more regional level. And so essentially, it's based on two pillars. So on one side, the state trained municipal vulnerability preparedness providers, such as Clarenham Hill Consulting. And then on the other side, municipalities were awarded with those opportunities to submit a grant, and then obtained the option to work with the MVP provider, and that led them through this process. And so we are kind of like at the end of the overall process, where after a lot of stakeholder engagement and conducting a community survey, which was very well received by the community, so in case you haven't had the chance to look at it, I have a copy of that actually with me. We received some very great responses, over 220 responses to that survey, as to what the citizens here think are important natural disaster, natural hazards, and what they would like to see moving forward, whether there's specific issues the town could address, and so on. And so the MVP program essentially offers Nahant to better prepare for natural and climate hazards. As indicated, it builds hugely on stakeholders, so it's a huge community-based program, and that always kind of like formed our strategy as your provider as to how to engage the stakeholders here, how to get them on board, how to get them interested and aware. And then, as we will see, as some of the outcome measures, that might also be a critical thing moving forward, because Nahant has a very community-oriented neighborhood, and that could be tapped into in moving forward. So furthermore, it's educational planning efforts, and then grant funding to tap into additional grants, and I will go into that later. And so, yes, so there was a community survey that was conducted, several interviews with key stakeholders, and then on February 9th, we led an eight-hour workshop on a Saturday. And I see another key stakeholder sitting here that also participated. So we had participants from the municipal government. They are listed here. We invited the State Department of Conservation and Recreation, and we had a variety of committee members and stakeholders. And the participants are also listed here, so ranging from schools to Council of Aging, Finance, Senior Housing Conservation, Health Department, and so on. So it was quite a good variety and diversity of stakeholders that were present. So at this workshop, we defined natural hazards and climate change impacts, and I will show another slide that goes into that. And based on that, we identified key features that were impacted, and thereby we looked at societal features, at infrastructural features, and at environmental features. We also determined vulnerabilities and strengths within Nahant, and then based on what we found and what we developed throughout that workshop, we developed and then prioritized action measures and strategies. And the next step will be to implement those action measures that came out of this process. So these were the top hazards identified at the workshop, and those are also in line with what we heard from key stakeholders and what we saw in the survey. And so it's flooding, either being coastal flooding or being inland flooding, it's wind and winter storms and associated ice issues, it's sea level rise and shoreline change, and it's also extreme temperatures. And this is a slide just showing or demonstrating more like how temperature has been increasing. And so this slide is only kind of like a selective measurement from the 1980s to the end of this century, but as we know, temperature has been increasing since the last Ice Age, and there have been measurements that document that. And so this slide shows the projected increase in temperature by the middle of the century up to 4 degrees Fahrenheit, and by the end of the century up to 7 degrees Fahrenheit. And why is this so important? Well, increasing temperature kind of like drives everything. It's a parameter of climate change, but it's also a driver for a lot of those measures, because air that is warmer is able to capture more humidity, and as such, air masses become much more powerful, and they are able to contain more humidity, and as a result of that, they are able to just drop much larger amount of rain in a very short time and over a large area. And at the same time, we also have like not only very large low-pressure systems, but also high-pressure systems. So we see like drought, huge drought areas. I mean, we see California, we know that four years ago, we had a drought in western Massachusetts, so this is already happening. And another important aspect of increasing temperature, of course, is also sea level rise as the ice caps are melting and glaciers are melting. So that's also depicted on that graphic on the bottom, where you can see that since the 1920s, actually, we already have been seeing an increase in sea level rise. And so that's just the facts, and we have to see how we can deal with that and how we can plan better for the future in order to protect our infrastructure, our environment, the public health, our safety and emergency response. And that was kind of like where we set out at this workshop, in order to develop some action measures that would attack that and would deal with that, and where everybody would be on board. And so as one aspect, we looked at what are vulnerabilities in Nahant. And so those are the three different feature areas, infrastructure, societal, and environmental. And for infrastructural vulnerabilities, it was said that firstly, the stormwater sewer system is one key vulnerability, the associated pumps or lack of pumps thereof. The natural ditches or storm drains are in bad shape, or they could be opened up, they could be put to better use. Coastal protection was brought up as a vulnerability, because seawalls and dunes are not in the best shape. And then a concern was that utility infrastructure, both co-located and causeway, is at risk if like the causeway gets flooded or sees some erosion, but also because substations are located in the lowlands, and so, which are flooded quite frequently. Furthermore, electrical wires above ground are subject to wind damage. And then the Lynn Rotary mostly, but also causeway, due to debris being shoved upon it due to coastal storm surges, is quite vulnerable, in addition to other roadways around town. So those were the infrastructural vulnerabilities. The societal ones concern themselves with individual preparedness. So it was brought up that people could better prepare for themselves, sometimes not really aware of what should be done, what could be needed. Response time and staffing could be increased, and especially being aware where specific residents like with certain needs are located and in order to access them quickly. So just increasing the response time was important, or was a vulnerability, but would become an opportunity. And then the access to and from Nahant due to the causeway being the main, the main road into the town is a vulnerability, in addition to elderly and vulnerable population. And so lastly, as an environmental vulnerability feature, similarly tapping into some of the infrastructural notions, but so it was noted coastal erosion is a concern due to the dune erosion, then saltwater impacts on natural habitats, such as in the lowlands and in the Furbush Road area, and invasive species kind of taking over on the beaches, and bad water quality, indoor air quality due to mold, and impacts on shellfish due to the ocean warming. The strengths and assets, however, so we already said that societal strength is pretty dominant, it's pretty clear, and it's a huge strength in town, and you should definitely build on that. So committed leadership, the neighbors helping each other, that is like a good basis for opportunities to collaborate and to work together. And for infrastructure, so the Fire Department and Emergency Department was just here, so they should have, would probably be pleased to hear that, but so a very well-functioning fire and police system, a proactive town staff, and then the already existing seawalls and armored shoreline are clear strengths, along with some of the bunkers and generators around town. And environmental features are essentially made up by the, by the physical features in Nahant, so being the shoreline consisting of rocks, then the highlands, natural springs, seagrass, and also plenty of open land that could be used for natural water storage or open space that could be used as a temporary water storage, the Lowland Park potentially. And so those measures are, these days are known as green infrastructure measures, where you can use those as water storage. So after, so during this workshop, after like the assets and the vulnerabilities were discussed, the groups, we had like four different table groups, and those groups were tasked with identifying how they would prioritize, with what action measures they might come up with, and how to prioritize those, and what would be most important. And so this slide here shows the high-priority actions. And not surprisingly, this is kind of like reflecting the main vulnerabilities and the main concerns we had due to the flooding, due to the storms, due to coastal, due to sea level rise, and due to increased precipitation events. So it's all linked to flooding. And so we have like the two main items, inland flooding and coastal flooding. And so the action item here would be to establish a long-term strategy for inland flooding to maintain, to upgrade and maintain the stormwater and the natural drainage system. And there are various points that are connected with that, so it would be drainage, it would be green infrastructure measures, it would be natural ditches that could be dredged and maintained, but then it could also be like existing beach parking lots with permeable surfaces that could be just being considered like utilizing a different pavement, porous pavement for those, or yeah, various opportunities are there. And then one great opportunity would be also to delink the existing sun pumps from homes from the sewer system. And so that could again be linked into green infrastructure measures, kind of like educating homeowners as to what else they could do with their, the water they receive on their properties, such as installing rain gardens, and so there are various options as to what could be done to the just simple rain barrel of collecting rainwater. Yeah, and for coastal storms, the idea or the priority action would be to come up with a long-term coastal defense plan, which also looks at natural shorelines, at living shorelines, so at dunes that would be enhanced and would be able to absorb more of the water and would kind of like be the first barrier, so kind of like pushing that out into the water. And then in parallel to that, to repair and upgrade the seawalls. The third priority action item would be the causeway and Lynn Rotary, so the idea here is to collaborate with DCR and also with neighboring communities to keep that one-way, not one-way, but the one evacuation route, so to say, open to the mainland. And all of that is linked to improve communication and awareness, and so this feature kind of like threads through all these measures. It's like educating homeowners, it's educating or establishing a better communication and awareness for emergency preparedness, it's working with volunteers. And I just talked to Brendan, and they said the MVP Committee is in the process of doing kind of like a call-out for volunteer tasks. So if like anybody would be interested in volunteering with specific measures, that could be around, like beach cleanup or other education measures around town, so there are lots of ideas and possibilities. And yeah, also educating property owners as to what else they could be done with their sun pumps and better solutions. So the medium priority actions are listed on this slide, and for, so they dealt with increasing utility infrastructure resilience, and so that would encompass floodproofing the substations in the lowlands, then burying overhead lines and using renewable energies, or having more opportunities to that, so tapping into more statewide programs. And another idea was to find a better solution for the compost area that would meet the environmental protection standards, and so there's, there are also various options how that could be conducted. I just leave it as is for now. Emergency response could be improved by adding shelters and equipment as necessary, so that would be conducted in collaboration with Emergency Management. And then also like coordinating with the Swanskill Schools, because there is already like some existing system in place, how to get school kids back and forth, or how to keep them at their, at the school, but so that definitely could also be improved. And then again, environmental education around natural solutions, just making citizens more aware as to what could be done, what natural-based solutions could be in their own garden, why they're beneficial, like why this is a great approach to spend some time and money, and it might even be fun to do that. Also looking at native tree species and increasing their amount over town, and then enhancing the natural ecosystem. And this slide lists other priority actions that came also out of the workshop, and so just to name a few here, it's like to increase resilience of roadways, then medical and food access due to the threat of Nahant becoming isolated, and the NIMU, so the Nahant Emergency Management, no, Preparedness Organization, has proposed to work with local restaurants on providing food provisions, like in case of an emergency, so that was one of the outcomes. And then again, it's education, so educating floods, educating homeowners on their flood risk. I mean, most of them will probably be aware of the last storms in last March, but also educating them on what flood insurance options they would have, and also what floodproofing solutions they would have, and how they just can, could be doing, could be saving some money. And yeah, lastly, to participate in the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Community Rating System, which would allow the town to tap into much, much better insurance rates, which would benefit all of you, also reduce flood insurance costs. And then a regional approach was discussed, and so one of the measures here would be to reduce the combined sewer overflow in all of the communities to get a better beach quality. So that would be dealt with in collaboration with other municipalities. And then the Hazard Mitigation Plan should be updated by 2020. So those were the outcomes of the workshop, and so what is currently being done? So the MVP providers, so we are finalizing the MVP report, so there's a draft report out there, and so this will be finalized, including comments from the public, and this report will then be sent to the EEA. And on April 19th, they guaranteed us that Nahant would receive their MVP designation, which will mean that Nahant will become like a community with a good standing and the option to tap into a variety of grants. And so the second follow-up grant out of this program is the MVP Action Grant, and the call for proposals for that is currently running. I know that everybody is working hard to get a good grant application together. And other, other grant opportunities are the Coastal Management Plan. And other grant opportunities are the Coastal Management Plan, which is, can also be only tapped into for certain extents if the town is MVP certified. And obviously, there are all kinds of FEMA grants that can be tapped into also in assistance to updating the Hazard Mitigation Plan. And yeah, we work closely with Tony and all the town staff, so they're aware of all these opportunities. And yeah, so the MVP report is posted on the town's website under, for the MVP Committee. And comments will be accepted until tomorrow. And then we will wrap it up and prepare the, prepare the final, the final report. And that will then allow the town the standing and to be eligible for further, for further grants and for further money. And so up to, so the MVP Action Grant is like a great feature because it allows up to $200,000 or even more dollars in state funding. So it's quite huge. So with this, I'm open to answering any questions or comments you may have. Please go ahead.
In the, in the area of education, there were two areas that were touched on. I have done some reading, which indicates that other areas of the country, particularly the Mid-Atlantic coast, which is a little bit lower than we are, is already experiencing situations where people can't even sell their homes anymore. They're basically subject to repeated flooding. And in the way that, I think it was Forbes Magazine described it, is they're becoming second-class citizens because they have no equity. They're going to have to leave their homes. They might be able to sell their land, but their homes are worthless. So it's hard to say if something like that will happen in New England or coastal New England or not. But I'm wondering if there's been any thought of proactivity in terms of figuring out how to prevent a situation like that happening in Nahant. That's pretty much my question. And it's not for me personally, but maybe for someone else.
Good, good for you. Yeah, thank you for that comment. And I think that goes in line with one of the priority actions that were developed during, during the workshop, that education on like how to flood-proof your home is crucial. And those options include just barricading your home in case of a flood, but it also includes like option of elevating it and elevating important infrastructure, HVAC, and other equipment that shouldn't be located in the basement. And if it's flooded, it gets just very costly and very damaging. And so there are, there's a ton of information out there, and we will encourage the town to have information on this in the library and accessible, maybe put it online, maybe put it on the, on a town website through FEMA. So there, there are a lot of documents as to like how to flood-proof your house, what to do, and also how, what to know in case you're flooded. Also because there are specific steps you need to undertake if that's happening. So as always, it's better to be proactive and just not having it happen. But if it does, you would also need to know like who to contact and what kind of steps to take, what photos to take, what measurements to install. And then the point listed here, the third bullet on the flood risk and mitigation measures, the town working, is working towards participating in the FEMA Community Rating System. And that overall will open up like a large possibility as to options for floodproofing. And so yeah, that will reduce costs for homeowners in terms of their flood insurance. But it will also be, have very practical examples as to like what to do in, if you're in this, in one of these flood-prone areas.
Sure, yeah. My question is more to the point that let's assume that some people eventually, in the next 10, 15 years, are going to lose their homes or their homesites are now will become uninhabitable because they're flooded too frequently. Are there programs with the state or the federal government that will, instead of waiting for those people to be flooded out and stuck, is enable them to move, set to a higher ground or, you know, something like that? None of this prevents this from happening?
Yeah, absolutely. So FEMA has like programs in place that helps towns to make those decisions. Obviously, it's only possible with the participation of that specific homeowner. So you can't just tell somebody to move and to lose their property. But yes, FEMA has these programs in place where they would buy you out proactively. It's not necessarily, although a huge critique with FEMA is that they're based on historic flood insurance, on historic flooding. And so they're not necessarily encouraging proactiveness to like the extent we would wish they would, because money sometimes is not available before, but only after a disaster has happened and strike. But yeah, there are existing programs in place that would allow, like working together with the town to have, to buy out specific homeowners or offer them some alternatives.
There's also programs through FEMA to lift someone's house on stilts too as well. So there's some other, they will help pay for preventative measures for your existing home as well, outside of having you move from your property.
Is it a threshold though? So it's going to be pretty significant?
That's a pass, sorry, that's a pass-by scanner.
Right, you're saying proact?
Shift to a future-based scanner.
Are you going to see walls moving like that?
No, I think actually those kinds of things will all fail unless you go to the extremes that the Netherlands is prone to. I think finding ways of helping people relocate, not forcing them to relocate, but helping them to relocate before their property becomes worthless. No, I'd be interested in helping to educate people about that.
Yeah, I totally agree. I mean, it's, it will show that, so these are some of the slides I showed during the workshop, just to give you a better visual as to how flooding might look like this would be next year. So it would be just, sea level will have risen by eight inches compared to the 1990s. And so you see the lowlands and also the northern part are already flooded, but... Yes. Yeah, and so one of the, and so this is where this comprehensive strategy, I think that should or would be developed plans in, is that you might just want to consider where it makes most sense to like save homes or where to maybe retreat and, or elevate or have like natural solutions. Because, so this will be during a major storm event such as North Easter or... And then this will be in 2050. So with increased sea level rise of, which would add like additional.
Excuse me, would you come up to the microphone and your name and your address?
Thanks, Barb Ducharme, 16 Little Nahant Road. So my question is, do these blue areas on the map indicate areas that will be inundated in flooding events? Or are we looking at actually the reduction of the footprint of the town? Thank you.
You can leave that mic up there.
Yeah, so this slide here, and I apologize for just jumping into that without like any further explanation. I thought it would just be nice to have a visual with that. So those, those maps were prepared like by Surging Sea Risk, which is a Massachusetts organization. And so they just, they did like a bathtub model where they just added additional water over existing areas. This is not, this does not mean that those areas would actually be flooded. So it's suggesting that this is an impact those areas are facing. And it does not say anything about what the town would do with that. It's just the likelihood during, so this is 2050. So let's go back to... Yes, that's what I, that's what I wanted to say. So it's during a storm and it's like in addition when you have like three feet of surge, of storm surge. And yeah, so it's just something to, to get people's attention as to if you want to consider long-term planning and where you might want to make some changes around town, where you would want to focus like some water retention basins, for example, or some water storage, then that, it would highly be indicative that those areas would be very suitable for that. So that's just for that.
Jeff Thomas, 16 Little Nahant Road. If you've got to protect water supply or electricity, you know, it's a must. So you either have to relocate those things, which would be incredibly expensive, or find some way to put them above ground or, you know, create structures around them or something like that. It's a problem.
Thank you. And this is where the, which was brought up as one of the high priority measures that the, that the electricity substations should be... Yeah, that those substations should be floodproofed and should be elevated. And yeah, that would take care of that.
Now, not to be selfish, but when you say bury overhead lines, I don't suppose that would be a little nonsense.
If it gets, if it gets as high as you are up Little Nahant Road, you better buy a big boat. Trust me. I think we, what we need to do is look at this, and there's a couple, couple ways of doing it. Number one, I think we need to meet with the Corps of Engineers and build a jetty, you know, a breakwater on, along Willa Road out there and on the Coast Guard Beach. On Castle Way, Castle Road, we need to build a very strong and high seawall, covering all those, behind those homes. Because that's where the water's coming from the harbor. And those two, you know, we build a jetty, have the jetty built, it'll stop the storm surge at Willa Road where the water's coming in. And you build one off the end of, you know, like Coast Guard between Little Nahant and Big Nahant out there. That will stop that storm surge. You've got to raise the bank at Little Nahant. This water here coming in Foxer Road and Lower Foxer Road came from the tide coming through those homes. They had no wall, and the water just came right through the rocks and everything else. We pumped it up. But we've got to rebuild those seawalls along and give the homeowners some sort of incentive to borrow the money. We have to step up ourselves to protect everything on Lower Castle Road, Lower Foxer Road. That's where the flooding came. And we need to do that. And with the jetty, with the, similar to Winthrop, they have the breakwaters out there. And the Corps of Engineers, we need to do that this way here and allow everyone around the coastline to get authorization and approval and help to raise their seawalls. They're all independent, you know, private. And sometime when the water hits, it comes right through because it's broken, like the storm of, you know, 68, a few other storms, it comes right through. But that's what we need to do and need to look at, okay, to protect Nahant. And your water idea, protect the water. Bailey's Hill is very, very high. And we probably could probably build a backup water system for the town with a tank out there. And it can be buried inside the Bailey's tunnels, you know? That's, that's huge underneath there. And protect it, you know, because the water, if the water gets as high as Bailey's Hill, we're in trouble anyways, you know, so. But the storms, huh? I'm sorry. No, I don't think so. Of all the storms, but we, that's the way, that's the way, that's what I'm going to be working on. I've asked for a meeting with Tony with the EPA to get it going and the Corps of Engineers, so we can develop a plan for those, you know, because it's going to cost, you're talking mega stamps for these breakwaters. And it'll take the storm surge off of Tudor Beach out there and the Coast Guard Beach and prevent the water. Plus, we have to raise, I would think to raise the Shot Beach, the grass dunes, we have to come up and, to prevent that water from coming over. Down in Shot Beach, at high tide, I mean, we used to have sand at high tide, maybe 30 yards, 40 yards. Now it's right up to the base of the rocks. And you can see the warming trend, you know, things that... But I think there's ways and there's methods across the country. And if you look at some of the plans, what they're doing in Florida, Connecticut, Delaware, they're building these walls, okay? And the federal government's helping them out. We need to apply for all these funds, okay? Because the individual homeowner, they can't afford to build, you know, $100,000 seawall. But we need to get, you know, authorization number one to do it, then get the funding for the residents. That's what we need to do up here. And the selectmen and the committees and, that will take the sting out of this and protect the, protect the residents of the low-lying areas. You know, Castle, Fox Hill, you know, the lowlands, you know? And also, all the ditches have to be cleaned up. They're not, the problem now is we need to get a grido in there and clean the ditches from way down to Castle Road all the way to Kelly Greens. They're all plugged and they all have to be redug. And then we've got to lower the pond behind Kelly Greens, which is, because all the water is flowing toward the ocean. Before, it used to be like this. Now we got a pipe that's plugged up. Someone built a seawall over the, over that pipe and ordered to put a pump down there, which we, the original plan, the original engineering plan. But we've got a half, we've got a problem down there because the pipe is blocked. And we've got to get, you know, we've, we've got the intimate, we can go through it, but we want to make sure, you know, it's going to take care of our problem. Have the water pump both ways, you know, one back to the harbor. Problem is Doggy Beach. That sea, the sand is just, you know, you can see this, you can see the sand dunes on the incoming from Little Nahant to the Coast Guard. It's all coming up as the sand is blowing in from Revere and Winthrop. And it's just, it's blocking these pipes, okay, the outfall. So we have to reconfigure and engineer that whole problem so that we have a good drainage system and we don't have the problem down at Foxer Road. You know, we got $175,000 to spend on it, but it's no good to spend all that money and we're not going to solve the problem. We've got to solve that problem, okay, before we start spending a lot of money. But they definitely need a pump in there. But they definitely need a pump in that area because of Doggy Beach. Doggy Beach, the sand is up almost three feet. And that's why, in the old days, it was like this. It drained both ways. And the ditches were clean and we've got, we just, we fell behind. And so that, you know, that some of the, but you're talking money, lots of money, especially the Corps of Engineers. But they've got to, they've got to develop a plan. They had a plan in 1941. Richie O'Connor had it. I don't know if you remember that name, it's an old town name. And he had a plan for these Corps of Engineers. And so out there, so prevent the flooding along Willa Road, where you're getting the flooding for the Kelly Greens and all that. And then the other one is Castle Road. That's where the, these high tides are coming through and we, we've got to rebuild those seawalls and get it all the way down to Doggy Beach and to, to the Castle Road, I forget the number, but down there to prevent those storm surges coming through the yards and it just floods Fox Hill, you know, and Lowlands. And then of course, the Shot Beach, that has to be, we'll prevent, you know, how long it'll last, but it should give us at least, you know, some time.
If you're, I understand what you're saying, there is potentially federal or state meaning.
Yes. Well, we've got a, we've got a, you know, Seth Moulton, he's well aware, he's coming over here and we're going to be presenting these things to him, but I've got to have some numbers because he has to go to Congress and, you know, Nahon and Swampscott wants money and Marblehead wants money. And of course, we're the smallest community, but we're the most vulnerable out here. And so we're trying to get a strong, you know, a position of priority because of the flooding and that's what we're pushing for. So we're not sitting here and, you know, we had a copy of this presentation and we haven't sat down and digested it and then say, okay, what's the next move? What's the action items? And what, what do we have to do to do it? And come through with that. We just can't, oh, great, great presentation. We know that, we know the problem, now we know, how do we answer it? And that's what we need to do. And then get input from the, from the townspeople too. They have, they have their own idea too. But they're in a, these people in like Fox Hill, White Way, Castle, they're in the floodplain. Willa Road the same way, you know? And that, you know, that could straighten it out. Hopefully, the Corps of Engineers builds, you know, gets an idea of what we can do. And the set of plans, the set of plans that they develop and then the costs associated with those plans is going to be, you know, then we got to get political clout, you know, to go to Congress and go to state and get money, you know what I mean? We need a, we need a thing like 95% and the town will pay 5%. You know, just an idea, just to give you, as we couldn't afford, I mean, just the breakwater alone out there at both, both beaches, that's where the water is. Little Nahon doesn't need it because you're in all the high, high ground up there. The Causeway, you know, that's DCR and, you know, they're, we're going to be meeting with them too, to show them this too, because they're, they're crucial. And your idea about the water. And don't forget the sewer. We're putting a new sewer line on that, everything goes across that causeway and if, for some reason that gets backed up and flooded, we're in, you know, we got, we got to, and it's happened. It's happened.
And to echo that point, somebody, the state environment, the situation.
Yeah. Yep. Yes, yeah, yeah. So we, we. We're very, 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 you know, very good with the political clout we have, you know, and we just, it's not only going to be the state, but it could be the federal government too. Combination of both, because that's where the money is. But they're spending the money, if you notice, down in Connecticut, Delaware, all the way up the coast because of the floods down there. And they've applied, they're about a year in front of us, so we've got to get, we've got to get caught up, okay? We want to get our oil in the water, so to speak, to get some of this money.
I have read that the legislators, as I say, they can push the land and move it to coast down, or as we were lucky, ours had pushed up some. So it's affecting them before it affects us.
Yes.
But, you know, it's a matter of time. The waters of the Gulf of Maine are forming. That's probably because the, 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 the west. And so that is causing the local sea level rise all by itself. And, you know, if the Gulf Stream stops, which is happening in the past, we're going to see some big changes.
We need to look at everything and get prepared and get up to the top of this and get in front of it, okay? And let's not wait till we have another major storm and we've got people, you know, have to be, you know, saved. Yes, don't, don't, don't go away. I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to shut you off, but this is, this is the first step here. We've got this committee that did a great job and identified all the problems and now we need to take the action items. And so we're going to be doing that. We'll probably have to call a special town meeting just to deal with this problem down the road here to get, you know, get the permission to apply for everything, you know, and then, and hopefully come back with some answers and what we need to do and where, where the money's going to come. It's all money, you know what I mean? I mean, you're in Little Nahon, I mean, unless you want to move. Well, there's a lot of, yeah, absolutely, yeah. But, you know, we, the, the average, the average people down in those low-lying areas, you know, Willa Road and, you know, they're getting, you know, they need to rise, you know, raise those seawalls. And as you well know, there's got to be permission to do that, you know? And they've got to be, you know, really, the engineers have to plan this out a little bit. We're repairing the wall at Tudor Beach, as you know well now, and that's the first time that's ever been damaged, you know? Why don't you take to the mic, so people, people, no, no.
I was just going to comment about if you're, you're asking about the lines being put underground. Brendan Bronnik, Olmstead, Two Summer Street. I'm, was also on the MPV Committee. The issue about the lines being, putting them underground, that is a combination of a resiliency dealing with potential wind or ice storms, given that if we're talking about warmer temperatures, we're also talking about potential greater tropical storms than we've had in the past. And we are, given our isolation, you know, the lines connecting us to the mainland are underground and unless the causeway itself is physically removed, where power most likely is not going to be interrupted. But in, on the island itself, on Little Nahon, Big Nahon, we can have internal disruptions versus if we then potentially move them underground as well as our communication lines, it may afford us a level of resiliency and durability through storms that we have not previously had. Little Nahon will lose power.
Wow.
All right. Just to the point as to like the data and what additional studies will need to be done. So this report and this study already enables you, because it's based on like the most accurate climate projections, it's based on like the, the most accurate data for the region and for the watershed. So it's, it already captures like the best available information for Nahon. So that being said, based, based on this, the developed priority actions are like the most important outcome of, out of this program because that will allow for you to go out into the community and say, well, we worked with the key stakeholders, we had a community survey and maybe you want to open up the survey once more? Question, question mark. But we had a workshop with key stakeholders, there were options for public comments. So what is presented here today, that is really based on a lot of different individuals' opinion. We had a wide range of stakeholders representative for overall Nahon. And so this should put you in a position to clearly bring the point across as what was heard and what represents the majority of findings and in order to move forward. And then of course, yes, you need to kind of like get your thinking cap on as to, okay, how do we move forward, like putting the grant application together, like how are we going to do the math? How costly will that be? What do we focus on first? And there is a variety of grants that can be tapped into, as I, as already said, so I would encourage you to just tap into all of them. Tap into the Hazard Minigation Plan, options for elevating specific properties or for, for moving them, working with potential repetitive loss owners to get them on board and have some action there. And then working with the Coastal Zone Management, which focus more natural-based solutions, but, but also like just tapping into all the available grant options that are out there because the state is very aware of the vulnerable situation of Nahon. And so they will probably be very positive about this moving forward.
Very nice. Again, you and your committee, you've done a great job on this thing, this presentation, yes?
I know it's not as flashy as some of the bigger projects, but you know, right now we have a wetlands bylaw and the major focus of the bylaw is floodplain and areas adjacent to floodplain. And it's what we can do on a property-by-property basis to help reduce our flood risk when we do have these storm events. So I think, you know, it's not as flashy and it's not a big money thing, but it's something we already have that can protect us and help make us less vulnerable to flooding and sea level rise events. So I mean, I think that's something that we have now, we should continue to have because long-term, I really think it's going to make a difference for us.
So I just want to say thank you, Isabel, and thank you to the committee. You know, this has been, this took a lot of time with a lot of people, there's a lot of work. It's been a very long journey to get to this point. Thank you to the residents that participated in the survey and for those that came to the workshop. It was a Saturday, it was, it was about eight hours long here in this, in this town hall. There had to be 30 to 40 people here for eight hours. I mean, it was, it was an awesome day for Nahon to see how many people took the time, took that day to, to sit and talk about the different issues that, you know, the town's facing, not just for the next storm, but for the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years and longer. You know, this report, like Isabel was saying, is going to help point us in the right direction for a number of grants offered through the MVP Program. So the first step was to become designated. We got that designation, we received some funds that we were able to hire Isabel's firm to help us with this process. Now we're going, now we've gone through this stakeholder process and the beauty of this program is it really lets the town decide and run, you know, it's, it's very localized because every town is different. So it really lets us look at with key stakeholders and, and help from experts identify what our biggest issues are. And by going through that process, we now have a report that has identified some of our high priority actions, medium priority actions and, and further. Now, we're eligible for action grants through this program. Action grants that as a single commi, uh, community are up to $2 million. The state will cover 75% of that and we have to cover the other 25%. There's a ton of, it's, it's not an easy, it's not simple. There's a lot of criteria and it's, it's very competitive, but we're working on that right now. We can also look at a regional, if we, you know, work with Lynn or Swampscott, we're eligible as a regional, regional grant up to $5 million. So, and once you're in the program, you're in the program. So once you finish that first grant, you're eligible for another. So it's been, it's a, it's a, it's an awesome opportunity. The state, the, you know, Baker Polito administration is, and our, and our partners in the legislature have made climate change preparedness a priority and they're, and they're dedicating significant amount of money towards that and helping local governments put or invest in these types of projects, so. But it's without the committee, without the volunteers really doing the work and, and starting there, you know, we wouldn't be where we are. So truly thank you to the committee and to, and to all the residents that have participated to this point, and there's more work to do.
Thank you.
Just a couple announcements to end the night. So I, we have the annual town meetings coming up on the 27th. Certainly the, we have, we'll be voting, we'll be voting on the budget at that town meeting. So I am going to be, I've been talking about this, I'm going to be presenting a breakdown of the town's finances and the decisions that we're, we're faced with this town meeting. So I'll be hosting two community meetings here in the town hall. The first one is going to be Saturday, April 13th at 9:30 a.m. And the second one is going to be Wednesday, April 17th at 6 p.m. And I, you know, encourage folks who are interested in understanding the town's finances and what's on the ballot or what's on the warrant, you know, at this town meeting to come and, and, and listen to those presentations. Say that again, sorry. Yeah, so again, Saturday, April 13th at 9:30 a.m. And Wednesday, April 17th at 6 p.m. We might be able to, might be able to livestream it, haven't, haven't figured that one out yet. And then we have the closing announcements on the scholarships, if you want to do those.
Yeah. Did you want to do your town administrator report again?
Yeah, that's it. So if you just go to six.
We'll probably have a meeting next Thursday night.
Probably. I've got to check with availability of the hall.
We've got the $1,000 Charles Kelly Scholarship, we're going to make the announcement on town meeting floor. We've got three submittals. And then as well as the veterans scholarship and the garden club scholarship, that will be announced just prior to the annual town meeting. And the Kelly one, well, the board has not voted, it was supposed to vote tonight, but they'll vote on the three essays that the three candidates submitted, you know, so they'll, we'll read those over, then make a decision on the number one for Kelly, the $1,000, you know? We moved it from last year from 500 to 1,000, we figured, you know, pay for the books, I mean. I mean, five hundred wasn't, was kind of like low, so we know the books are going up. So, the college kids can apply for that. And then there's other scholarships too, there's a whole webpage of various scholarships on that page and I hope the high school seniors take advantage of it and apply as it's, we'll pay for something. Tony, anything else we need?
Yeah, so, the compost area is gonna be opening up next week, Wednesday, the tenth. The compost will be open on Wednesdays and Saturdays from nine a.m. to three p.m. And we also announced that prepares on the Ellingwood Chapel begin this past week. That project should be completed before Memorial Day, that's a CPC-funded project. And we have spoken with the contractor who's doing the work there and there are protections in place for the sensitive areas in the, within the cemetery and also, construction will be suspended during funeral services as well. And that's all I have.
Is anyone else having anything else before I adjourn the meeting? Again, thank you, you and your committee, you did a great job and this is like phase Is anyone else would like a chance to say anything to us?
Andy, Mr. T. Major.
I'm sorry? Well, I, 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 I hope both selectmen, I know T. is very sick, I know he's been sick for about two or three days. And, and I think Enzo, he's, he's at the doctor, so we've got a couple of selectmen down, I'm not sure, yes, yeah.
Christine Johnson-Lisio, fifteen Fox Hill Road. We're opening the compost area, I'm just wondering, is there a part of that plan to remove?
Yes.
I went by today and it's massive. And so, I worry about bringing more in.
It's, it's overwhelming, that area.
It's a flood, and it's a floodplain.
We've discussed a plan.
Yeah.
Bring the eighteen-wheelers in and the big giant payloader to remove it. So, because it's, we've never seen, I mean, that's full right now. So, but hopefully we'll get through the, next week and then we'll get the eighteen-wheelers in there to remove, start removing it.
It's not quite, it's, I've just, so people aren't alarmed, it's not quite full.
Right.
It's certainly, a lot of the piles are up front, so it looks extremely full. And it's, you know, right now, the equipment that, that DPW has, it's difficult to move those piles because it is wet. So, you know, moving those piles, we'd have to bring in some outside equipment or haul it out of there. But we're aware of it. Actually, we, typically, we put twenty thousand dollars towards the compost site in the warrant each year. This year, we're putting fifty thousand because we definitely need to put a little bit more attention to that area, but, but.
We'll have it cleaned up.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Once all the lobster traps get out, we'll really start cleaning up. I also want to remind everyone at home and here that we've started the pothole, digging up all the potholes and we brought a company specially designed to do these things and they usually, they do a great job, they don't just cut the, you know, cover the pothole with some hot top, they, they square it off, so it's really, so they're in the process of doing that. You've probably seen some police officers directing you around the traffic a little bit, but they're, they're gonna get to all of them. If you have a specific need for a pothole in front of your house, call the town hall, that's our pothole hotline, and they'll go directly to the Public Works Department. And the Public Works, and in conjunction with the company that we've hired, they're doing a great job, so hopefully by spring, we'll have the roads back in good shape and less potholes. The Tudor Beach prepare is ongoing and hopefully that's done by Memorial Day. I, hopefully, they're working on that. And then, we're also gonna finish the WAF area, the WAF ramp and the, all that, that has to be done and that contract's coming back to finish that because we've got complaints down that area. If, anyone, anyone else? I'm gonna move to adjourn. How's that? I'm gonna vote, vote for the adjourn.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
Thank you.